We are moving to session, study session 4. Psychology in what was growth and development. Psychology in what growth and what development. Then learning human development, physical development, cognitive development. When you talk about human development, although various scholars define physical development in slightly different ways, most generally break the process down into what is states. Into what infancy, early, mid and this was childhood, adolescence, early adulthood, middle age and old age. Then in terms of ages as people have lived longer, some have added what very old age to these stages. At each stage specific physical changes occur that affect the individual's cognitive and psychological development. Then coming to the infancy. This when the child was still at the emperor's stage, at very, very little infancy. That is physical development, how we model the child, how we direct the child and how we train the child. Then the early stage. Of course, when the child has moved from infancy to early stage and this stage is characterized by one thing or the other. What characterizes infancy? Infancy was characterized by this stage. Then mid-stage. What characterizes that? When you talk about adolescence and all that. Then let's say childhood. Let's say childhood. Is where the person is now moving to full adulthood, adolescence. That is characterized by different developments like puberty, regals and all that. Development in the week, regals and all that. Then early adult school. Early adult school. Is it why it is characterized by certain attributes? Middle age and old age. When you talk about old age, like 65 and above. Middle age, 45, 50, 55 to 60, 65. That is middle age. Then when you move from infancy to early childhood to middle and to late childhood, you move therefore to what? To adolescence. In these stages there are other things that needs to be mentioned here like five stages. And then what? In this developmental stages you have five stages. Five stages will also come in here. And when you bring the five stages, it is part of the developmental stages. But it is also a composite stage in infancy. Early childhood, mid and late adulthood. Late childhood, sorry. Then adolescence. Early adulthood, middle age and then old age. Then moving to cognitive development. This has to do with our brain, our reasoning and the thinking. How we think and how we reason. Cognitive development refers to the acquisition of the ability to reason and solve problems. It is through our reasoning ability that will help us to factor in how to solve problems through what? Reasoning. Then the main theory of cognitive development was developed by Jean Charest as a developmental psychologist. He probably talked about developmental stages. Apart from cognitive development. He probably talked about developmental stages. And how we approach problems depends on our reasoning ability and cognitive abilities that will prepare us to factor in what can be used to solve this very problem. And what are the problems? Problems can come in terms of research and in form of anything. Because there is nothing like research without what? Problems. What leads us to research is what? Problem. When a problem comes and then you don't know solution to that problem, then you go to research to do what? To provide solution. To provide an objective and what? Dependable what? Solution for that very problem that erupts. And that's what? That's what usually leads to what? Research as a result of what? Problem. Seeking what? Solution. Then the primary theory of psychosocial development was created by Erik Erikson. Then the German development, the greatest psychologists. Erikson divided the concept of psychological and social development into what? Eight stages that correspond to the stages of physical development. These are the stages of development and the stages of Erikson. And Jean Erikson probably made mention of those stages. Infancy, early stage, five and then what? I read. These are the stages of development. Every human being who has must pass through that stage. From infancy to early childhood, from early childhood to middle age, from middle childhood to late childhood, then adolescence to old age and then adulthood, then middle age which is behind and what? Above. It is said that Erikson, the individual faces what? A psychological conflict that must be resolved in order to progress the development. This is where Jean Erikson comes in about what? What he says about equal and super ego. Because if this conflict comes and ego doesn't resolve it between him and the super ego, it will be what? It will be regret and root into what? The uppers. And people will think that that behavior has died. It cannot die. In future time the behavior will what? Seek what? To what? To be reemphasized again in future time. And then it will then affect that very state of life. That is what is known as carryover effect in this very behavior. Because that will be moved to the future. That by affecting the state, the individual within our own. Or that's that time in future time. Then we are now moving to Erikson's studies of what? Psychosocial developments. Erikson was an ego psychologist. Like I made mention of about Jean Erikson, what he said about equal and super ego. He said that of what ego psychologists could develop one of those what popular and influential theories of development. What are these developments? The stages that make up these theories are as follows. What is what? Trust versus what? Mistrust. Autonomy versus what? Shame and doubt. Initiative versus what? Growth. Then the dangerous way versus what? Inferiority. Identity versus what? Confusion. Intimacy versus what? Isolation. General activity versus what? Stagnation. Then the integrity versus what? Despair. We are now moving to the list. Let's take a closer look at the background and the prior stages that make up this Erikson's psychosocial theories. What is what? Early childhood growth. That is autonomy versus what? Shame and doubt. This is the first stage. Autonomy versus what? Shame and doubt. That is the early stage. That is what characterizes early stage. What characterizes early stage? Is autonomy versus what? Shame and doubt. Then when you go. This is the first. When it comes to stages, what is it first? That's when you talk about trust versus mistrust. You see a newborn child. The child will always be had the way he sees the mother that gave birth to him or her or who is a very early developer and who is to eat. Then even if they say that comes in and even in a relationship that the child is not used to. The child will not rely trust. Because the person is not familiar to him or her. Then this mistrust will not. This mistrust will be attached to any stranger around the child. For the child your mother, someone say they were attached from the mother. Then the trust will what? Fully attached to the mother. And when the child is crying and they are the cause of this trust because of the stranger or the unfamiliar face that is around. When the mother comes in the trust will come and they then by what? Embrace the mother. Then maturity. Eagle, eagle, the integrity versus what? Despair. This is the maturity experience. This one. Equal, the integrity versus despair is what characterizes the maturity aspect. By this line, the person is the way they are handled. They are mature. Then preschool, initiative versus what? Preschool. What characterizes preschool is what? Initiative versus what? Good. School age, indusory versus what? If you know it, this is when you try to achieve what you desire in life. You are in school. Then indusory versus inferior. This school age. The age depending on how you pass through the stages before this very stage. It are these way that we denote by this very indusory. That is being industrious. Then this one is what? Versus what? Inferiority. Is it that you are indusory or what? You are inferior compared to what you are seeing there? And then judging from what you have experienced and how you have faced your early stages of life. Then adolescence. What characterizes adolescence is identity versus what? Role confusion. It will need to follow. It will need to pass through these stages as you want to. That there is still will not be there. What should be there is what? Role confusion. You will not do know what you face. You will not do know what you are doing as. You will not know what to choose when there are actions. Because what? You are what? Something with role confusion. You don't have identity. You can't claim that I am this or that this is what I can do or that this is what I cannot do. So that was role confusion. This one in the land is young adulthood, intimacy versus what? Isolation. Intimacy is when you are attacked. Is it that you are highly intimidated? To when you go to the adulthood. The intimacy may be made equally by the previous stages you have passed and how you have those stages. Whether you do and does and what characterizes and characters of the previous stages was well observed and followed the way you want to. That was coming with intimacy. Whether it will be intimacy or what? Isolation. Then the new adulthood. General activity versus what? Stagnation. This is where. That is how vast, how industrious and how reasonable you are. That will determine whether generativity will be there or stagnation. Will the main component because of what? With the previous stages and then the vast, vast previous stages. You do not know you are left or you are right because of what? The generativity was not there because of what? I can argue. The previous stages. Then when it comes to this early childhood, preschool, infancy, maturity, school age, adolescence, young adulthood, middle adulthood. All these things matter than is what characterizes that. Is it that you are autonomous or you suffer shame and doubt? And you move to another stage. Then this is the overadvent. This is the overadvent. Psychology studies, a summary charts. We talk about the experience. We talk about events, outcomes. Then infancy. By psychology moves is the state of infancy. And you see trust versus what? Mistrust. Then early childhood, two to three years. Autonomy versus what? Doubt. We talk about what? That one is what? Well. Then preschool, three to five years. Initiative versus what? Goods. We talk about exploration and what? Focus. Then school age, six to what? Eleven years. Indusory versus what? Inferiority. That is school. Confidence is the outcome. Then adolescence. That for eighty years. Identity versus role confusion. Social relationships. Fidelity. Then this is young adulthood. Ninety years to forty years is young adulthood. We talk about what? The conflict that you face with what? Intimacy versus what? Isolation. That is relationships love. Then when you talk about middle adulthood, forty to sixty five years. General activity versus what? Stagnation. One and what? Care. Is what? The outcome is what? Care. Then maturity, sixty five years of death. Equal, the integrity versus what? Despair. The reflection of life. Wisdom. That's when you have born growth, sixty five and above. You start to reflect on your what? Early life. Early life. Then a brief summary of the best stages is here. One is the go and trust versus mistrust. The first stage of Erikson's theory of psychosocial development of course between death and what? When you of age. And it was the most fundamental age in life. Yes, it is the most fundamental age because any mistake made by this very life and this very stage are made to say will automatically affect the subsequent stages. So during this stage one, it is the most dangerous stage because it leads to what? Follow the way it's ordered. Because any little mistake made that amounts to the subsequent stages. They are affecting the subsequent stages. And any mistake will be carried over. So that stage, they are affecting that way. Stages that follow states. Then at this point in development, the child is what? Automatically dependent on what? Caregivers for everything. So the caregivers. What the child becomes is at the hand of the caregiver that handles the child. Whether the child will what? Will be independent in later age. This stage is very, very important in the family that. Because the way you channel the child and the way you handle the child, it means the way the child refers the subsequent what? Stages. Then the outcome. If a child successfully develops trust, the child will be what? Safe and secure in the world. So then caregivers who are what? Inconsistent, emotionally what? Unavailable. What worries by emotional unavailability? The caregiver of us is not sensitive enough to know how the child feels and do know how to attend to this of the child emotionally. That is what emotionally unavailable is all about. Or rejecting. Or rejecting what contributes to what? Feeling of what? Mistrust in the children under their what? Care. When the child do not see the emotional care that will also give to the child as a mother or as a caregiver. Then the child will not have trust. The trust will not be there. Then mistrust is what? We will see. Because the child will not experience what is expected of a mother or a caregiver from you. Then during the first stage of psychosocial development, children develop a sense of what? Trust. When caregivers provide the ability to care affectionately. Then a lack of this will lead to what? Mistrust. Like I just mentioned, it will be the mistrust. When the child does not see that affection and care that the child deserves, it will lead to what? Mistrust. There are no child is going to know what they look except of what? Hundred percent trust or hundred percent doubt. Erikson believed that success to development was part about what? A balance between two opposing sides. Yes, no child is expected to develop hundred percent trust or hundred percent mistrust. There will always be what? A balance between opposing what? Sides. There is some speech work by a such as including John Bowden and many as what? They demonstrated the importance of what? Trust informing every word, attitude during time in adulthood. Trust is very, very necessary. When your child is afraid of you or your mother as a father or a mother. When the child does not trust you, the attitude will not be there. But if the child is the road that trusts, the attitude will be there. And the child will always be free and secure each time you are around as a caregiver or a mother. But when the trust is not there, the attitude will not be there. Or when the trust is a throne, the attitude will be a throne. Then the road of what? Independence. At this stage two, autonomy versus what? Shame and doubt. The second stage of Erikson's of psychosocial development takes place during early childhood and his focus on what? Children developing a greater sense of what? Personal control. Then the road of independence. At this point in development, children are what? Just starting to gain a little independence. They are starting to make own basic actions on their own. This independence is needed. You allow the child to have that great sense of independence and to develop on this own without you helping him to do. No need to lead this direction. You must not do anything for the child. You allow the child to develop and having developed at this very stage. Then what is really? The essential thing of this very stage is that children need to what? Develop a sense of personal control over his past case and a sense of what? Independence. Partly trained in place and in contact road in helping children develop this sense of autonomy. This autonomy is needed. And the party training whereby sense of control over his past case and sense of what? Independence are allowed. This autonomy is needed. The child was not follow the child. He was not accompany the child. He was not do anything for the child. That should be left of autonomy. That should be left of freedom. That should be left of jobs on the side of the child. Then outcomes. Children who struggle and who are what? Shamed for their accidents may be left to without a sense of what? Personal control. Success during this stage of psychosocial development leads to feeling of what? And failure results in feeling of shame and doubt. If at the end of these very stages and then you decide that you do everything in doing for the child, the end result will not please you and what you are trying to suffer. The child will not forgive you because of what he may have. You may have first thing to acquire which is what? Shame and what? Doubt. But and when shame and doubt is shown, failure accomplishes. Because when the child looks back and the child remorse you. When the child wants to do this and you are not there for doing this for the child. The child do not have autonomy. If freedom not be found, independence is not there. The child will do what? Fluff and fail. So the child will not succeed. Shame and doubt will always be there. Because when the child wants to attempt doing that thing for her, doing for her, that giving my head of independence, autonomy to try on his own and you are not there for the child. The child will always be doubtful. That is. That's what? That's what this doubt is all about. The child will always be doubtful. Can I do this? My mother can be doing this for me. My caregiver can be doing this for me. At this stage, you are not there for me. Can I do this? The child will even be afraid of trying that thing having known that you are always there for him. Then he will be very doubtful if he can do it and it will result in what? Failure. It is right. Because this is where what we learn, we learn, we learn processes. Learn imperativeness also. The child will fear that if I try this and definitely what? Fail. If I try this and fail. Even when the child can succeed without the mother, he will believe that if I try it without the mother, who are be there for me? All and often I will fail and learn imperativeness will be embedded in the child and the child will live without this problem. Outcome. Then finding balance. Children successfully complete this stage, feel secure and confident while they should do what? And left with a sense of what? Inadequacy and self doubt. What have I said? Finding balance. Finding balance. If you complete these stages, if you complete those stages, if you are child, if you are mother, if you're a child and you are mother or your caregiver have this very, there will be very independence when you realize and the autonomy will thrive on your own. That will always be confidence. And you feel what? Secure and confident. You will feel what? Secure and what? Confidence. But when this very independence was not there, the autonomy was not there. Nothing, nothing. They will, they handle everything for you. Anything, they will always be there for you. Then this inadequacy and what? Self doubt will be there. Because when you choose to try on your own, you will always say yourself. Can I do this? And before fully ask, finish, before you finish asking yourself, can I do this? The other side will go this. No, I cannot do this. My mother is not there for me. My caregiver is not there for me. Therefore, I cannot do this. Because of that very doubt, that will be shame and that will be doubt. And then when you finally try on your own, definitely you will fail. Because learn imperativeness as disturbed them as erratic away. And when you try to do it, you will still say failing. Even when you have succeeded in that to another or your caregiver. But for the fact that you have seen it as this, my mother can be there for me and my caregiver can be there for me and I cannot and they are not there for me now that I cannot do it on my own. If the child can't handle it, the child will definitely what? Fail. And then he will feel shame and what? Doubt over anything that the child, the child will what? To do. And the balance will not be there. Rather it will what? Negative. And it will continue to affect the subsequent stages. And it will be regretful in future stage. And the child will suffer it more than even the mother. And the mother will not like it by the time it will suffers. Okay, so the theory. Initiative versus what? Goods. The third stage of psychosocial development takes place during what? The personal years. At this point, the psychosocial development, children begin to what? Access their power and control over the world through directing, through directing play and other words, social interactions. Yes, the child will try to be in charge here. But remember what is in that this stage and the successful aspect of this stage in the subsequent stage in the first phase. Then in the time was truly not sure through the previous stages, then power and control will be a throne on his own side and he will try to what? Be directed and be in charge of his life and he will his world. Then children are successful at this stage. Feel better and then go to what? Live others. Yes, because that's very independence and this very confidence have been achieved. So the person is comfortable enough to meet what? Others. Then outcome. The majority of the third stage of psychosocial development is the children. Children need to begin what? Accessing control and the power over the environment. Yes, the children need to be in charge of the environment. The child is the, he needs to control the environment. He does not need to be afraid of anything. That is independence and the freedom and the confidence should be there. And as soon as the confidence is a throne, then without the charge and the control of what? His present environment. And then the child and lives others. That's before. Industriability versus what? Inferiority. If what? Psychoanalytical, psychosocial stage takes place during what? The early school years from what? Approximately ages five for what? Eleven. Through social works and interactions, children begin to develop a sense of what? Pride in their what? Accomplishments and abilities. From the age five to eleven, the child is likely to develop the what? The sense of what? Pride and accomplishment and what? The outcomes. Children who are watch their courage and commended their parents like teachers, like I said here and now. When your child does well in school or they need to be tried in doing, there are ways of what? Bringing their emotional state by doing what? Commending them, do what? Reward. That is what do not positive reinforcement and then negative reinforcement. That's, this is where it works in. Because of what? When the child does well, they reward him or her for doing well maybe in school and as a student. When he brings back good result, then the child will do what? Will do their first. Sometimes you go this way. If you become second, if you do take second first position or second position, I'll buy this, I'll buy that. When the child happens to do that, you do what? You do that for her. And when your child fails, you don't need to shout down on the child. Try to do what? Take the child, you can do it better than the person that took the first position. Rather, you try to let him know, him or her know of his abilities and what he can, his capabilities. Then successfully find, finding balance. Stage four. Stage five. Identity versus what? Confusion. The fifth psychosocial state takes place during what? The often popular teenage stage. Teenage years, sorry. This place, this place what? An essential role in developing a sense of what? Personal identity. Which will continue to what? Influence, behavior and development. Yes, here personal identity will be established. And then when the personal identity is established, it will definitely what? Influence what? To a future. During adolescence, children explore their what? Independence and develop a sense of what? Self. This is where self come in. We have self concept. We have self identity. And this self is very, very valuable. Because how you see yourself will determine how you react in front of others and how others will see you. And how you see yourself will determine how you act and how you act will influence how others will see you. So this self is very valuable as a quotient that you do what? Develop this self, you develop should do what? Like we have self identity. We have self esteem. This will always advocate for what? High self advocacy and high self what? Estime. It is very, very valuable. Then what is identity? When psychologists talk about what identity, they refer to all what? All the beliefs, ideas and what values that helps you and value what? A person's behavior. How these beliefs and ideas, values will have that identity? Self identity very likely. Believe and value have for yourself and remember to definitely what? Influence your behavior and your action in regard on which is your what? Your behavior. Then why identity is important? Our personal identity gives each of us a what? Integrated and cohesive sense of what? Self and then just through our what? Life. Identity is very, very important. It is very, very important. Because when you establish it, it is very valuable. It will like to know what? Confidence. And then when this very identity is established, you know who you are and you know whom you represent and what you can offer. And this will definitely boost your what? Estime and your self. And then when you have this very esteem and high self advocacy, it will what? Determine how others will approach you and how you receive yourself determines how others will receive you. Because it will definitely influence what? You are kind and you are active which is your what? Your behavior. That's the six, six, basic aspects of isolation. Long adulthood need what? Comprehension. Not being in relationship with what? Other people. Success leads to what? Strong relationships. Why failure results in growing less and isolation. When a child is growing at this age five, say sorry, at this stage, intimacy versus what? Isolation. When you are trying to relate with your peers, with your peers in your sexual setting, in your sexual environment, the outcome of that relationships will determine how you will what? Will accept. When you have positive relationship and good relationship with your peer, then it will lead to what? Intimacy. But when you do not have such relationship, you will benefit. It will not do what? Isolation. You will always be alone. You will always, you will be antisocial. That's in that way, you will be antisocial. You will be what? Isolated and be what? Isolated and be what? Antisocial. Because when others are playing, when others are doing things together, you are you know sobbing, sobbing or doing one thing or other but not in good role. Then Erikson believed it was what? Right that people they look close, committed relationship with other people. Yes, you can, nobody is an highlight, they said. The relationship is always needed because you need others to succeed and others need you to succeed. Living in isolation is not what we can. Rather living in what? In group. Then building on earlier stages. Remember that each step dues on space. Learned in previous steps. Thank you. I love this. He said, remember that each step dues on what? Stairs learned in previous steps. Yes, because the previous steps you took will determine the subsequent steps and how success create to begin. If the other one was not lived in the way you supposed to and it will not build in the way you supposed to, it will be what? The what you didn't do then will be carried over to the subsequent stages. They are by affecting that stage because you didn't do it when it worked. And that's what Jean Erikson said at what? That it will be refreshed and they are ready to be conscious and you seek what? Attention in the future. They are by affecting that very stage there. And according the one past before and then the present stage. That's the seventh. Then productivity versus what? Stagnation. Adults need to what? Create a nature, a non-do things that will what? At last then. Often by what? Having children creating a positive change that will be for what? Other people. Then during adulthood, we continue to do our laps, focusing on our what? Career and family. Yes, adulthood. This is, that's where you try to lead somebody who build on your career and then on your family. Try to have your own family and to care for your own family. Have your career. Artis success in your career and others. Then care is virtue and virtue. Care is the virtue achieved when this stage is handled through. If you handle this successfully, care and virtue is achieved. And then they will be proud of their accomplishments watching what you have accomplished and what you have achieved in life. That's the eighth. Integrity versus what? Despair. The final psychosocial stage of course during old age and is focused on reflecting back on life. Yes, this integrity versus what? Despair is when you have passed the entire stages in life from stage one to this stage. Then here and now you are now at your adulthood and you sit down and start to do what? To reflect back in the previous stages and what you have passed through. Then what will make you happy at this stage? That your own is if you have succeeded in those stages. Successfully you have achieved what you got to achieve and then you will be very, very happy. You will be like wow. So I am able to do this. I was able to do this. You will be very, very happy. Then integrity will then be there. But if you never did what you got to do other stages and you must not have achieved what? Will make you happy. And then despair will come. You will be regretting. I ought to do this and I did not do it. I should have done this but I did not do it. This, that's what? This reference is what? Characteristics of what? Despair. Then despair. You will be, despair will characterize your attitude, your action and everything and you will necessarily be happy and I know. And you are necessarily unhappy and angry.